Call the meeting to order and we're going to skip the pledge of allegiance. And um, we'll do roll call.
Barb Heck.
Here.
Karen Beddinger.
Here.
Monica Fogus. Monica. Lucy Hunter.
Here.
Mary Bacharin.
Here.
Monica Fogus.
She says she's here, but her mic isn't working. Oh, there she goes.
She chatted that she's here.
There we go.
Okay, there she is. Okay, you guys are all here.
Okay, we're gonna move next on to the approval of the agenda. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to make a motion first?
Oh, sorry, probably.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ooh, that sounds like everyone. Okay, now we're going to move to unfinished business. The minutes from February 27th. And um. Do we have approval of the minutes from um, February 27th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as sent.
Second?
I will second, but I'm abstaining because I wasn't at the meeting.
Can I second?
I don't know.
Well, let me just second and we'll put it down via Zoom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Oh dear, that's only two. Um.
We could table it until next meeting.
Sure, that sounds good. Thanks Lucy. Okay, we're gonna move on to new business. And the first thing we're going to do is appoint a chair. And I would really not like to be chair due to some health issues right now.
I would really like to not be chair. Monica, how do you feel about being chair?
Go Monica! We lost Monica?
No, she's there, just she's muted.
I see her nodding her head, do you?
Yes. However, she can't, there, can she run?
Are you unmuted now? Nope, it's still not working.
I don't see her video either. Can you type, Monica?
I have to close Zoom to get the mic to work. Okay.
So we can, it is a requirement that you appoint a chair. But Barb, if you're comfortable continuing until we have our next meeting, which hopefully will be in person instead of Zoom, we can continue and do the appointment of chair and minute approval at the next meeting.
That sounds just right. I will.
Okay.
Good gracious. Um, okay, the Spiegel fence variance. Has everyone read Deborah? Yeah, Deborah's papers that she submitted?
I have a question, and this may be a question for Corinne. So I noticed the order of the agenda items for tomorrow's town meeting. We're voting on the fence ordinance first, so if that passes, does this become a moot point?
Yes. But the reason that, through the discussion with Deborah and I, the reason we agreed to continue was because of the posting requirements. And if for some reason the fence ordinance is continued again, which it has been multiple times, we would have a minimum again of a resubmital 15 days of having to send out the certified letters, and it's delaying the process. So that's why we decided to go ahead and go with tonight's meeting. And um, ultimately, yeah, the fence variance is less restrictive than what, or the fence ordinance is less restrictive than what the variance is asking for. But this has been a long process for Deborah. She's been attending some of the meetings that the committees have, or have been having, and been discussing the desire to modify, well, to install, she doesn't have a fence, to install a fence since, since the fence ordinance was modified the beginning of 2019. So this may be unnecessary, but figured it was, it was good still to move forward just in case.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would like to go ahead. I think it's a pretty fence, takes care of what she needs. It's not blocking anybody's vision. And go ahead and vote on this once someone makes a motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
So are you doing the corner cutoff, Deborah? Like the regular ordinance requires that you do that triangle corner cutoff on the fence?
What corner cutoff?
Well, according to the fence ordinance, when you live on the corner, you're supposed to set it back so there's this triangular area that has no fence on it, right?
Well, the way it is now, it's from the corner. 30 feet in either direction has to be only three feet tall. It doesn't have to be cut out.
Okay.
Right, that, that site triangle is to do the measurement of how far on each corner it has to drop down, but there actually can be a physical fence there.
Okay. Question answered.
That's good to know, because I can't see pulling out of my driveway with the four-foot fence. That's solid. Um, any other questions, discussion on this?
Barb, I'll go. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the variance for the fence to the Board of Trustees.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on this? I'm taking that as a no, and um, let's vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? No one's opposed, so her fence has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. If necessary, I'll provide that information to the board tomorrow evening.
Okay.
Right, and it, it's my understanding that the board was recommending it, going to recommend it anyways. But let's just move on then, since her fence has been approved by us. We've done our duty. Okay, Peonya Master Plan Update.
So Evan has been the primary, you know, he was brought on as the intern and has been working on the master plan update draft for well over a year now. And he's on, I see that his camera is facing him now and not the ceiling. And, and he's going to be the one to present you an update. I did send out an email earlier this morning that had some bullet point ideas, as well as an attachment for the master plan update from Bennett, Colorado, which is the example of what we are looking for when we do ours. We wanted to make it a little bit simpler and easy for people to navigate and be able to grab and get an understanding and a feel for what the direction of Peonya is and what the forward master plan and guiding document is. And that is a brochure style. And so I'll go ahead and let Evan take over now.
Thank you.
Oh, there it goes. Yeah, so I think the last time that I've actually spoke with the planning commission as a whole, I, I think it was probably last September. And a lot of stuff has happened since then, public input meetings. So from those public input meetings, I formed surveys. We've received all the information back from surveys. And so a lot of the process for me is crunching that data and understanding the public interest. And then trying to form a document based off of that. And so now that that data's crunched and analyzed. So to start with, I did send out, or Corinne in that email, sent out some goals and objectives for each chapter. And I don't know if you prefer, if I just briefly touch on them. But if, if you had a chance to read them over, any kind of feedback would be more than welcome. I'm looking to, in the next two and a half weeks, really hammer out the narrative part of the master plan. So then in July, you'll be able to, if you meet, at least get some chapters adopted, or at least be able to read through them and make any kind of changes. So the goal so far, especially with utilities and transportation, it really deals with the capital improvement plan. And a lot of these things are ongoing right now. The formation of the CIP through our asset inventory. And so really following that, and that'll, that'll really serve as the document for infrastructure. And then when you go down to housing, we really just need a housing survey, whether that's a countywide, whether that's a town-specific housing survey. There's very few things that the town can do without that information and have it be justified. And then in terms of community sustainability, that mixes about five pillars. Three of those pillars are pretty, pretty laid out throughout the utilities, housing, economic development. But when it comes down to the one thing that the master plan would have left out, if not included, is environmental and governmental. And so just touching on those, really the goal for governmental is to increase the level of trust between government and its citizens. I think the town, since I've been here, has done a great job with having a more involved citizenry. And so to be able to build upon that, I think is huge to any kind of projects going forward. But yeah, so from here, these goals will help form the master plan. So I printed this off. So the master plan will look probably something a little like this. It's not the conventional master plan document. If you look on Dola's website, they'll show comprehensive master plans. And they're just really, they're long, they're drawn out. It seems like they could have summarized and been more concise. And instead of having 100 pages, have 20 pages and get to the point. And so that's what we're looking to do here. We're looking to have a document that people can go to and say, okay, this is everything we need within 20 to 25 pages. And it really lays out, you know, future development, lays out priorities, and really just have a document to base future decisions on. And so I don't think that 100-page document is necessary. And if it was 100 pages, that means that all of you would probably have to read over it before approving it or moving it on to the Board of Trustees. So I want to keep it simple, but I want to make sure that it consists of everything that the town's facing currently, that they can help get through that process, as well as look for things in the future that might come out of some of the existing issues currently, and being able to look forward in that manner. And so I, I think that the goals and objectives, while they're not clear, and I think if you have too much specifics in there, you'll come across a situation where it needs to be left a little bit, a little bit of vagueness in there in order to really fit any kind of situation that comes. And so I, I've tried to include as much detail in the goals and objectives, but leave it vague enough to hopefully encompass, you know, anywhere between a five to 15-year. And these are things that are gonna change, probably in the next year, two years. Just quick updates, so I'll leave it so it can be updated with little effort. That's one of the better things about a brochure template. The town of Bennett was able to do an in-house and update for about, I think it was $2,500 to $5,000, just from staff time, instead of bringing in consultants to do a whole revamp process on their master plan. So hopefully it's easier to update in the future. And there will be chapters that will need to be updated as soon as the asset inventory is done. But I'll, I'll kind of do my best to leave it kind of ad lib style to where you can just take the information. It'll be complete on estimates, but once we get those studies back, we'll be able to fill in very specific data on what exactly is going on, especially with their water, wastewater transportation system. So if there's any questions, feedback, anything like that, feel free to ask questions.
I have one quick question. Our water ditch company did a very beautiful map, which is now with the town. And my question is if the other water companies that are being served within town, if they have presented? Because we've had problems with digging and pipes cut, not now, but several years ago. And wondering if any of the other water companies, and how many water companies serve um, Peonya?
Corinne, do you want to take a stab at it? From my recollection, recollection, isn't it like 24 water companies or right around there?
Well, there's 27 water companies, but those are out of town. As far as ditch companies, and there's three, well, I think only two ditches that actually run in the town. But the issue is, is that there's, there's laterals. So there's the Stewart ditch, but the laterals off of the main Stewart ditch are individualized entities off of that branch, similar to our out-of-town water companies. So the town doesn't have a lot, we don't have any jurisdiction or say. One other water ditch company has told me that they have a map, but I don't have a copy of it yet. And as far as water companies, we have one water company that's provided us a map of their water lines that's out of town, but we don't have any other ones.
Okay, that kind of answered it. So I guess I goofed when I said water companies. I meant ditch companies on supporting the town homes. So, okay. I think one thing on the master plan, maybe I'm getting too picky. Maybe that's not what's supposed to happen, but um, I encourage people to maintain property, to keep neighbors' values up.
And, and that's, that's listed under the housing goals and objectives. And so support the preservation and improvement of the town's existing homes and neighborhoods. And so example of that, that I listed was collaborate with the police department to encourage homeowners and landlords to maintain properties through code enforcement efforts. And so that's under housing. So housing isn't just about affordability. And in our master plan, it also deals with the quality of housing and the maintenance of it. And so ensuring that the existing neighborhoods and homes are, are kept to a standard in terms of maintenance, and making sure that, that's followed through on as, as a, is a goal.
What is the timeframe for the SIP and for the asset inventory?
We're anticipating to start getting those preliminary reports in for approval and review, probably late fall at this point. We are delayed a few months, you know, because of the events of earlier this year that are continuing. Yeah.
So Evan, you mentioned there were two things that weren't either environmental, and what was the other one?
Governmental. So that's under community sustainability. So the five pillars are social, economic, governmental, environmental, and I'm blanking on the last one, but it's covered here. I'm trying to think specifically what it is. But no, we didn't really, in terms of community sustainability, we didn't, there were questions in the survey that detailed that, that gave us information. There was a little index, I think it was on the second survey, which asked questions pertaining to the town and how residents felt, how comfortable they are with speaking, whether they think their voices are heard. And so building an analysis off that and working that into the master plan to further encourage citizen activeness and just overall comfortableness of going to town meetings, you know, letting your views be heard, and, you know, just having a more active citizenry. So, and also building that trust between the citizens and the town.
Okay, thank you.
The land use, when is that going to be? Have we had any kind of meetings on that?
Um, yes, so we had a public input meeting. It was right before COVID-19 hit and started shutting things down. And so we had, I think it was 13 residents show up, and we split them into three different groups. They looked over, so the one thing that I believe that the, the last master plan did was they really hit a home run with their land use policies. Whether or not those were used up until now with the being, you know, 24-years-old, I'm not sure, but I think it really covered a lot of important information. And so through that public input meeting, we had them look through all 36. It probably wasn't the most fun public input meeting, but offered feedback on that. And so what'll happen from there is it's, it's easier to get the land use section done based off the other chapters. Because once you understand where the public's coming from in their best interest, you can form the chapters, and then you can see these are the, the priorities of the community. This is the priorities that fit within that from the town's perspective, and start building, I guess, mapping scenarios that include any kind of growth, that include those priorities that were listed. And so that would most likely be the last step. And so usually the last survey, or surveys for land use, offer about three to four scenarios. And then residents vote on it, saying this is my preferred scenario. And then taking those and putting them in the master plan. So that would most likely be the last step. But you should have a lot of information to work off of to make it pretty easy for Delta County mapping to be able to work with those scenarios.
Should anything be put in the town's plan on, how do I want to say it, on um, now the words miss me easily, on annexing?
And that'll be a section in land use. So that'll, so by state statute, the town's required to have a three-mile plan. And so that kind of encompasses how the plan, or how the town plans to extend any kind of infrastructure within a three-mile area in case that area was ever annexed. And so that'll also be included in the mapping portion. It could be something as simple as we plan on extending city services out this way, and this is how we're going to financially plan for it, whether that's an increase in user fees, whether that's having a subdivision, you know, come together and pay an increase per month until the extension of the utility is paid off, the, the cost of that project. And so there's, there's multiple different ways that different communities do it, but that would be in the three-mile plan. So that is part of the land use.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? Monica, we can see you. Do you have a question?
I just have one more thing.
Okay, sorry.
No, 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 no. And it's, it's, it's the timeline of a project like this. According to best practices and everything like that, it takes about 12 to 18 months for a municipality to make a master plan. And so I've been trying to follow that timeline pretty strictly. And I, I feel like that's still in reach. And I don't, I don't, I, I feel like we're right where we need to be at this point. But yeah, come next month, you should have drafts of the chapters that I laid out goals and objectives for. I just wanted to distribute those to you, so you could look over them real quick, provide any feedback, and then I can move forward with the typing of the chapters. But if there's anything that you see missing, or any other questions that you feel like you didn't mention tonight, feel free to shoot me an email or, or call a town hall, and I'd be more happy to have a conversation.
Okay. Anyone else? I guess not. I like the compactness of the land use. I think you can get too detailed, which is gonna get people upset all the time. Um, so. Is there anything else? No?
Is there anything that we have to do as the planning group? Do we have to do anything with this master plan? Or do we have to say anything to the board? Or, I mean, is this just information only?
Um, at this point, it's purely informational. I just wanted to give you a quick update and allow you to provide any feedback. I, I'm pretty sure by Colorado statute or best practices for the state of Colorado that it is brought before the planning commission, before it's ever presented to the board. And so the planning commission has to approve it for it to get to the board.
But not yet.
No, no. So hopefully, hopefully, I'm, I'm hoping it'll be next month. I, I should have everything I need to be at this point in time to crank out those chapters. So I've been working on them, bits and pieces here and there, and just accumulating some information so that, now that I'm at this point, I can just slap them together and have that document ready for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
Yes, thank you. Is there any other comments, questions on this meeting? I guess not. Um, we could go to adjournment. I guess, do I need a motion on adjourning the meeting? No, then I call this meeting adjourned. And hopefully we'll be able to meet in person. I'm fine with a six-foot separation. It's so much easier than this. So thank you all for atten- So thank you all for attending. And think about how everyone wants to be chair of this committee. And we'll go from there. So I'm calling the meeting adjourned at 5:43. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you, Barb.
Okay, ciao.